Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of June 8th, 2015. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. McDonald, will you please leave us in the pledge?
Please. Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight and those who are watching from home. The type of meeting that you're attending tonight is a general meeting or what some folks call a voting meeting. The items that are coming up for a vote tonight have been discussed at typically at least two, if not three or more meetings in the past. So if you're seeing less discussion than you might anticipate, that's because most items that are coming up, if not all items that are coming up for a vote tonight, have been discussed multiple times in the past. So you may see some summary information tonight, but you may not see the level of discussion that you might expect. If you're looking for deeper discussion into items, I do strongly suggest that you tune into our Committee of the Whole Meetings. Those are also published on our website. Those are the types of meetings where we really get into heavy discussion and questions and answers, direct administration for more information and so forth. So those are typically our longer discussion meetings. What you'll see tonight are some quicker voting items because they haven't discussed at length in the past. If you do not have an agenda yet, there are agendas just outside the room, white sheets. If you are watching from home, the agendas can be found on our website, www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab, you can drop right down to Agendas and follow along with us this evening. If you are intending to speak at Audience Communications tonight, there are blue slips that are just outside the door. If you could fill out a blue slip and have it brought up to the table, that would be appreciative. That way we'll make sure that you get called on and the board does have an opportunity to hear you. We will also be taking a break after Item 3C, and that is to congratulate some of our award recipients this evening and those who are receiving some special recognition by the board. Next item on our agenda tonight is Item 3, Communications, and we'll hear from Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Dr. Leepa. Tonight we begin our presentation with a "You Be the Chemist" Award for a special young eighth grade student. Eighth grader Max Parr is not only into breaking down the fascinating world of chemistry, he's also into breaking records when it comes to chemical educational foundations, "You Be the Chemist" Challenge. It's an exciting and very, very competitive event in which Max has competed several times now. This Frost Middle School student recently won his second consecutive state championship in the "You Be the Chemist" Challenge, making him the first back-to-back state challenge winner since the inception of the challenge in Michigan 11 years ago. It is estimated that nearly 20,000 students in grades five through eight participated in this year's challenges throughout the state of Michigan, and Max came out on top. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Max for his achievements and let him know how proud we are that he is representing Livonia Public Schools and the entire state of Michigan at the national competition coming up on June 22nd in Philadelphia. Max is the son of John and Sandra Parr, and at this time, I'd like to invite Max to join me at the podium, please, while we give him a round of applause. Hi, Max.
Hi.
Thanks for being here tonight. I know this is probably not your favorite thing to do, but we appreciate it. Preparing for the national "You Be the Chemist" Challenge requires the study of everything from chemistry concepts such as distillation, solvent extraction and crystallization -- notice, I only chose from the list of words that I could actually pronounce -- to energy, lab analysis, chemical quantities, organic chemistry, and of course, the application of chemistry to our everyday life. According to LPS teachers who have worked with Max, he is fully capable and full of motivation. Frost Middle School science teacher, Karim Culkins, who I believe is in the audience with us this evening -- I can't see behind the screen there. Welcome, Mr. Culkins. Mr. Culkins says this about Max. "Max has a great ability to learn science and is readily able to understand new concepts without much, if any, adult help. He is extremely inquisitive and likes to learn new things, and he has the energy to do so. It has been great to have him in class each and every time I have taught a chemistry-related lesson in the last two years. We are studying basic nuclear chemistry and radioactivity right now, and Max has been able to go further than the other students, even teaching me a few things." The teacher says that. Wow. I certainly wish him luck at this year's championships, and I look forward to being there to watch his pursuit of first place in the nation. Since 2010, Frost Middle School has dominated this competition, sending 10 students to state finals. Three were crowned state champions during those years. Mr. Culkins, along with Webster Elementary Teacher Lorna Routier -- I'm not sure if Mrs. Routier was able to join us this evening. Can anyone help me out on that one? No? Okay. Okay. According to Mrs. Routier -- I lost my spot, hold on. She said Max was the first fifth grader to qualify and to go on to the regional competition when Max was in her class, and of course, he did it again as a sixth grader. She said, "Competition is tough, and in Max's case, it is also addicting. He loves it. Max is also very fortunate to have an extremely committed, two-generation support group with his family. I hope this is his year and that he takes it all the way to the top." At this time, I'd like to invite President Burton to the podium to present Max with this special certificate of recognition and also to introduce a special contributor to Max's success.
Thank you. Max, congratulations. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to read this certificate for you. Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Achievement, State Champion, "You Be the Chemist," from Frost Middle School, Max Parr. Honored by the Board of Education for Outstanding Achievement, June 8th, 2015. Congratulations, Max.
Thank you.
I'd also like at this time to invite Mike Hutto up to the podium. Yes, come on. Yep. Oh, come on. You're gonna come next, anyway. I'd like to introduce to the Board Mike Hutto. Mike is with PVS Chemical and on top of being 40-plus years in the chemistry business, is also passionate about the "You Be the Chemist" competition and about bringing chemistry to the youngsters in our state of Michigan. He's been a huge advocate of this program, and I'm thrilled that we've got it at Livonia Public Schools. Congratulations, Mike. Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. Thank you. I kinda wish Colleen would've left out the 40 years. But for those who you don't know, both Angela and I are with PVS Knollwood Chemicals. We're part of PVS Chemicals, which is a family-owned company in Detroit for almost 70 years. It's owned by the Nicholson family, and one thing they're very passionate about is education. And so Jim Nicholson, actually, at our first Chicago "You Be the Chemist" Challenge, came and spoke to the kids and said he was on a recruiting mission and wanted to see some of them apply for a job in the future. And in fact, we have our first state champion from Michigan working for us now for the third year as an intern. So Jim smiles every time he sees that young man because he's fulfilling Jim's dream in being involved in the program. This is a program, we're proud to say, costs the school systems nothing. We pay for all the expenses of the program, running the competitions, et cetera. As Colleen said, it's great fun for me, and I've really enjoyed being involved in it. But really, there's people that we have to be thankful for, you know, other than PVS. Yes, we organize, yes, we fund this, but you know, people like Angela Davis, who was my accomplice in this event and, you know, does all the organization of the events, and I really appreciate it and have done it for years. But even more important than that, you have to, you know, be appreciative of people like this young man and many before him, as Karim said, 10 years or 10 students, I guess, you've sent to the state. The effort that they have to put in, what these kids know is unbelievable. And we've even had these kids, as we're reading questions to them, go, "Well, the answer's this, but you wrote the question wrong. It should be written this way." And we're sweating bullets and they're analyzing the questions. You also have to be very appreciative of parents like John and Sandra that support their child and get behind them, and we see this so many times in this program, and it's really heartwarming. And finally, to be fortunate enough to have people like Karim with a vision. We present this program at no charge to anybody within our geography that we're servicing, and to have somebody like Karim with your children that has the vision of what the future needs and puts all the effort of what he does into this program, these are the people that we all should be thanking tonight and we should be applauding. So we should do that at this time.
Thank you. I don't know if you wanted to say a couple words. That's okay. I just thought I would offer. Okay, well, that's all we have. Congratulations again, Max, and best of luck to you at the Nationals on June 22nd in Philadelphia. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is another special recognition, Item 2B, I'm sorry, 3B, rather, recognition of the Allen W. Bush Award recipient, Mrs. Jenkins.
Okay. Thank you, President Burton. Tonight is my pleasure to bring another very special recognition to you. The Allen W. Bush Award is awarded annually by the Michigan High School Athletic Association to an administrator, coach, official, trainer, doctor, or member of the media who has at least 15 years of experience in the Michigan Interscholastic Athletics -- say that 10 times fast -- with unusually frequent and significant contributions to the MHSAA. I'd like to begin this recognition with a brief observation that I made recently. When 20 Churchill High School athletes were signing their college letters at a multi-sports signing event organized by Churchill's Athletic Director, Mark Hague. As these athletes thanked their families and their coaches for getting them where they needed to be in their sport and in their life, many of them also turned to Mr. Hague and gave him a heartfelt thanks for his leadership. There was an obvious connection there and a sense of mutual respect. So to me, it comes as no surprise that this Churchill alum is the recipient of the highest honor in the MHSAA, the Allen W. Bush Award. I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Mark Hague, along with Mr. Jack Roberts, who is the Executive Director of the Michigan High School Athletic Association, who will present this distinctive honor tonight to Mr. Hague.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. It's a great pleasure. Soon, if not already, this Board of Education will approve an MHSAA membership resolution for its schools for the 2015-16 school year. As usual, membership will be free of charge and participation in the MHSAA tournaments will be at, without any cost, to the high schools of this district. But a new, significant, free membership benefit is coming from the MHSAA in concussion care insurance that I want to mention to this Board. It's the first opportunity I've had to address the Board about this. The MHSAA has secured insurance for all eligible athletes at all member schools, grades seven through 12, for both practices and competition, all levels, all sports, male and female. So regardless of a family's situation, economic or their insurance condition, no parent has to delay in getting prompt and professional care if there's a suspected concussion. So your free-of-charge membership in the MHSAA has a new benefit for 2015-16. While the MHSAA's membership is free of charge, it is not free of all obligations. We expect schools to administer the rules fully, and we expect them to have a high degree of sportsmanship among their programs. We find that when schools invest in professional, passionate athletic administrators, they deliver that kind of program. And I commend this administration and this Board for the people it has put in charge at Stevenson, at Franklin, and at Churchill High Schools. They are outstanding, but it is this man, Mark Hague, who brings me here this evening. He is one of the four recipients this year of the Allen W. Bush Award, which is named after Mr. Bush, who was the second full-time director and who served during our largest period of growth in terms of new tournament opportunities for boys and girls. Mark was nominated for this by the Kensington Lakes Activities Association. He was selected by the MHSAA's governing body, the Representative Council, and I must say, the MHSAA staff in East Lansing that doesn't get a vote in this, has no say in this, is absolutely delighted, for the staff in East Lansing is a Mark Hague Fan Club. And this is a result of his modesty, his sincerity, his consistency, his passion, and his ability to do right things in the right way. Mark's service to Livonia Churchill High School is approaching 30 years now, and he's a graduate of Churchill High School, so most people have no knowledge today of Churchill High School without Mark Hague being in the picture. Mark has made himself a professional athletic administrator. He's completed three levels of certification of the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association, and he has presented on multiple times at conferences of the Michigan Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. He is a trusted colleague of athletic directors in the state, twice being elected the president of his league, twice being honored as a Regional Athletic Director of the Year in Michigan. We would need to use all of his fingers and toes and all of my fingers and toes to count up the number of MHSAA tournaments that he has administered with great excellence for the benefit of boys and girls in this part of the state. He is one of our very, very best. And Mark, on behalf of an admiring MHSAA Representative Council, on behalf of a grateful MHSAA staff, I am pleased to present to you a 2015 Allen W. Bush Award.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. That's my son there, Jake. It's just some random person in the crowd. I'll tell you a quick story about Jake. 19 years ago Saturday, I was fortunate enough to be put in this position by Rod Hosman. It was the day Jake was born. My wife and I came home from the hospital, my wife Anne sitting over there. Came home from the hospital with Jake with a broken clavicle. He wasn't doing well, but you know, I was kind of in a transition there. Should I stay teaching? Should I become an athletic director? Talked to my wife, and she said, "You really need to do this. It's your passion. It's what you want to do." And it's something that she really promoted me to pursue. I'd like to think it was that, not that she wanted me out of the house 14 hours a day, but she was very supportive, so first and foremost, and it's been great. It's been a labor of love, and I thank my wife Anne and my family here very much. Joe and Jake, I want to introduce them to you. Our Churchill graduates, you did receive your diplomas, right? Okay. And Meredith is at Holmes Middle School, so that's my family there, and I thank them very much. It's a pleasure to do what I do. Everything that I've done in this district, either locally or statewide, has been extremely supported by our Board of Education and our administration, starting first and foremost with Ken Watson and continuing with Dr. Randy Leepa. Our Board has been extremely supportive of any endeavor that we've gone into. The people in our administration, Mr. Hosman, Mr. Archibald, Mr. Anderson, Mr. McDonald, they've never said why, they've just said how. How can we do it? How can we get it done? So they've been extremely helpful to me and my colleagues, and I've appreciated their support throughout the years. Our community is fantastic. As Mr. Roberts said, I'm a graduate of Churchill High School. You just can't seem to get rid of me. I've been around and around, and I enjoy that. It's great. Our community is fantastic. The parent support we get with our Boosters Club throughout the years has been unbelievable. We give out eight $1,000 scholarships every year. We just did our golf outing yesterday, and I'm proud that we do that. So there are a lot of ways that I love that we give back to the community, and I couldn't do it without our community. So that's been a really nice blessing for me. Our coaching staff wouldn't trade them for anything. They're just great people, and they work great with kids, and they're just super individuals. So I get a lot of support. I'm one individual. That's all I can do, is as much as I can do, but a lot of people around here help me extremely, extremely much, and I'm so appreciative of that. Last thing I want to leave you with before I turn it back to the Board is, in this profession, not necessarily athletics, but education, I will never leave it. I will retire in education because I don't care whether you're a doctor, a lawyer, a dentist, a mechanic, whatever you are, we raise everybody. We touch everybody. They come through our doors, not just our district, but others. We are educators, and we raise every single profession that exists in this world, and I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud to have a hand in that, and I'm happy that I can be a part of helping young men and young women. And when you see their faces and when you see them come back and they thank you for what you've done, you've had a little part in that tree that used to be a seedling way back when, that gets it for me, and that's what I enjoy. That's just a fantastic feeling, so it doesn't matter what you do. We help you, I think, a little bit along the way, as I've been helped myself. So thank you for your support, Mr. Roberts. It's an absolute honor that you came from East Lansing. I can't thank our state association enough. That feeling's very mutual. So appreciate everything, and thank you for the award, and family, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Mrs. Jenkins.
Okay. Thank you, President Burton. As always, I'm just full of good news to present to you. This particular item is equally impressive and deserving of our recognition. I would like to invite Mr. Paul Serry to join me at the podium, please. We are celebrating Mr. Serry's 40th year teaching in Livonia Public Schools tonight. Mr. Serry is an AP Physics teacher in the MSC program at Churchill High School, and join me with a big round of welcome as he joins us at the podium. Welcome, welcome. When a young Mr. Paul Serry, when he first stepped into a Livonia Public Schools classroom, the year was 1975, and the also-young Mr. Steven Wozniak and Mr. Steven Jobs were also just beginning to work on something of their own, the first prototype of the Apple One computer. Kids at the schools were into eight tracks, trying to solve the brand-new brain teaser called the Rubik's Cube, and of course, they were listening to disco music, and they were obsessed with novelty such as Pet Rocks and Mood Rings. Fast forward 40 years, and Mr. Serry is still in front of LPS kids, teaching, leading, inspiring, and guiding them toward their futures. Tonight, we're celebrating Mr. Paul Serry's 40th anniversary here in Livonia Public Schools. At this time, I'd like to ask Churchill Principal Keith McDonald to join us at the podium.
Thank you. 1975, I won't tell you what was going on in my life if I had one at that point. Paul, you have touched the lives of many kids, like Jake here. You know, Jake absolutely loved your class. He used to talk about it all the time when he was in school. But you've also touched the lives of a lot of teachers, myself included. You were a mentor to me. Jason here and Mickey and Heidi over there all wanted to congratulate you and to thank you, and they're all thrilled, as am I, that you're coming back for at least one more year.
I'm gonna thank my wife for that.
So congratulations. Your legacy will live on forever.
Thank you. I just have to make a, I have to make a correction. It wasn't '75, it was '71.
Oh, '71. Okay, my apologies.
It was '71. I started at Ford Junior High School when they had just built it, you know, the Career Center, or not the Career Center, the Skill Center. But at that point in time, it was a junior high school, one of 10 or 10 or 12 we had.
Okay.
And started there and worked there for three years before transferring over to Stevenson.
I see. Thank you for that. I don't think the Mood Rings had been invented just yet.
No, they were coming around at that.
Yeah. Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite Board Secretary Tammy Bonnefield to join us at the podium.
Hold on just a moment if we can get a motion by the Board and then the rules start their action on that. May we have a motion, please?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the proposed resolution of appreciation for 40 years of full-time service with the district for the following employee, Paul Serry. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. All right, now you may have her back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I've just been informed it's Dr. Serry.
Yes.
Whereas the Board of Education is desirous of recognizing loyal and longstanding service to the Livonia Public Schools School District, and whereas it has come to the attention of the Board that Paul Serry completed 40 years of full-time employment in the Livonia Public Schools on February 11, 2015, and whereas in an era where many and varied employment opportunities often result in numerous work assignments, it is rare to encounter employees who have remained loyal to employers for over 40 years. And whereas it is a testament to both the quality of the work environment in the Livonia Public Schools School District and the steadfastness and dedication of its workforce, that Paul Serry has attained 40 years' record of employment with the school district, and whereas he has given of his talents, time, and efforts in fulfilling his many and varied responsibilities as teacher at Ford Junior High School, Stevenson High School, and Churchill High School. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby expresses appreciation and gratitude to Paul Serry for his sincere and dedicated service to the Livonia Public Schools and extends its best wishes to Paul Serry on reaching his milestones in his professional career.
Thank you very much. Just want to say, after all the other speeches, I don't want to talk long. I just want to say thank you. To me, teaching has not been a job. It's been, I guess, a career, or just something that I do, that I enjoy doing. So for me, the time of 40 years passed by so quickly, and like I said, I enjoy working with the kids. I look at some of the kids that I've had over the years who have retired. You had one especially, Ray Raymond, who I had in my first year teaching. He retired last year. I got a couple others in the audience I'm gonna keep quiet about. But again, I just, I thank you and just thank you very much for allowing me to play, to enjoy working with the kids and stuff. To me, that's the most fun, most enjoyment I've had. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments by Board members? Mrs. Jarvis.
I would just like to add that in addition to Dr. Serry's illustrious career, he is the reason that my daughter has almost completed her degree in physics. He was her sole inspiration.
Wonderful. We've got a lot of great teachers out there like that. It's fun to hear about it. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All right, we have a motion made by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now going to take a brief five-to-10-minute recess in order to congratulate those of you who are recognized this evening, so I can get that out, after which we will come back and conduct the rest of our business. Those of you who would like to stay for the rest of our meeting afterward are certainly welcome to do so. However, if you choose to go do something else for the rest of your evening, you don't feel obligated to stay for the business portion of our meeting, so thanks. you don't feel obligated to stay for the business portion of our meeting. So thanks very much. We'll recess for a few minutes. I would need their blue slip, please, at this time, so I make sure that you get called. I would like to remind folks, too, that we do have a very strict three-minute time limit that we ask everybody honor. The reason for that is so that everyone is treated fairly and that we have enough time to hear from everybody. Our typical board policy is that we limit our audience communication to 15 minutes. I do have a few more audience communication slips that will cause us to go to about 20 minutes or so, but the board has definitely decided that they would all, they're in agreement that they would like to hear everybody before we go on into the regular business of our meeting. So we will not be making anybody wait until the end of our meeting to be heard. We're going to go ahead and deal with all of our audience communications at the beginning. We would, again, like to remind everyone and ask them to respect the three-minute time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. The first blue slip that I have is from Sherri Prush. Sherri?
Good evening. I had a lot to say tonight. First, I'm going to start with what I wrote on the blue paper would be. My daughter goes to school at Perrinville. She's in the early childhood program. And today, she spent two hours on a bus on her way home from school. At what point she was, you know, at the point where she was 20 minutes late, I called the transportation department and it went to an answering machine probably because they were getting flooded with calls. And so I called Perrinville and I said, can somebody please tell me was she late getting on the bus? What happened? And they said, you know, they didn't know and they were going to call transportation and get me some answers. She called back and told me that there was a new bus driver on the route and the bus driver was lost. And that Kylie should be home around 5:00 and about a half hour. That was about 4:30. I hung up from her at Perrinville and I called the transportation department again and I said, where exactly is my child? I would like to go pick her up if possible. And they said she is at Elmira and Codwell. Well, that is literally, we would have to be the next stop. It's that close to our house. Kylie arrived home at 5:35, so a full hour after that. Phone conversation. I called back to transportation at 5:00 and said, where is she? She ended up somewhere off of Merriman. The bus driver got so frustrated that they decided to have the bus pull over and Kylie's old bus driver came and took over that route. By the time Kylie got home, you know, it had been, like I said, she'd been on the bus for a full two hours. And at which point, the transportation department, I'm sure, was flooded with other calls, most like mine. Everybody on her bus has special needs. And I would like some written communication as to what the protocol is. When do they notify me? Because I was freaking out at 10 minutes. I was flipping out at 10 minutes. My child can't tell me what happens on that bus. And I want some answers. I want to know what the protocol is. I mean, I know tomorrow's the last day of school and she won't be on the bus guaranteed. Neither of my kids will. But this is a parent's worst nightmare. I have other kids in the district who ride the bus as well. It's a little bit different when the bus gets lost and your, you know, your seven-year-old can come home and say, Mom, it was funny. The driver didn't know where he was going. But there are other mitigating factors in this, you know. She is nonverbal for the most part. She can't tell me what happened. And there was a parapro on this bus. How did the parapro not say, you're going the wrong way? How did this happen? Why did he not? The transportation department had no idea that this was going on until the calls started coming in. He hadn't contacted them and said, hey, I'm lost. I have no idea what's going on. So I do want some answers on this. Tomorrow morning, she will go for a well visit. Because I love Livonia Public Schools. And I try and trust you guys the best I can. But two hours is too long. It's 90 minutes too long. You know, if you get lost and you're five or 10 minutes late, that's one thing. 90 minutes? A lot can happen in 90 minutes when you live two and a half miles from the school. So if you guys, I know you don't always give me written communication, but I want to know. I want to know what the protocol is in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lee, will you please follow up with the family?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The next blue slip is from Renee Wilkins.
Hello. I am here to strongly encourage you not to close Perrinville, or at least strongly consider combining them with Jackson. As a fellow educator, please know I understand the financial issues facing districts across Michigan. There have to be other options that have not been considered. Have you truly examined all the options that do not involve classing programs or classrooms? Have you? Well, I believe that most educators are not like the one who was involved in the incident, Webster. I hope you realize how much scrutiny the district will be in under when you, if you close Perrinville. I know you certainly wouldn't want another incident involving a special needs student, whether it's intentional or not. However, these students at Perrinville are the most vulnerable as they are so young and limited in how they communicate. Therefore, the way they often communicate is through their behavior, which can be pretty extreme until they're able to learn better ways to communicate. Thinking you can just break these programs up and put them into various elementary buildings without significant planning is just plain negligent. Are these principals and other staff ready to train and train to handle these students? Will they be NCI trained? Will they be crisis plans? Will they receive further education? Because these are not typical students. They typically serve us. At the very least, they will need this kind of training. What's the district's plan to ensure that this is in place on day one of the upcoming school year? How will these students be acclimated to the building with their dignity protected? Can you ensure these students who are runners, which I'm sure a few are, will be safe at all times while in your care? These are students who struggle with transitions. What's a transition plan for these students? What will be done for these students when they are in crisis or they need a break? Michigan has pretty clear guidelines for seclusion and restraint, and I hope you would have these kinds of issues in place and addressed on day one of your upcoming school year. Can you ensure these students will not be sent home because the new facilities or the schools don't have the staff or the facilities to address their needs? How could letters be sent out to parents to tell them that these programs or buildings are closing when the board hasn't even voted? are closing when the board hasn't even voted yet? Is this how little this process is valued in Livonia? You can be sure that if you close Perrinville, the students who have IEPs, their parents will be advocating to ensure that they receive what they are entitled to under FAP. You can be sure they will be advocates and lawyers at more IEPs than ever. This means you are opening up to district if face possible complaints filed with the OCR, as well as the state, which will likely result in mediation and hearings. Along with not having trust of your parents, which is vital, this will likely incur financial costs for the district regardless of what fund it comes out of. Are you sure the district is ready to handle this transition and ensure each and every child with an IEP will receive the education they are entitled to? If you cannot, you are putting these students at risk, as well as the district in a very vulnerable position. Please, at the very least, please put some serious thought and planning into this transition to avoid opening up Livonia to further negative publicity and to avoid serious repercussions for the most vulnerable population. You owe them that much.
The next blue slip I have is from Dawn Harris.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope that you may have already, I know that you may have already made your decision in the fate of Perrinville. I don't want to cry. I don't want to lose my three minutes. God willing, you have decided to keep it open and intact as it already exists. But this is a letter to share with you my final thoughts about keeping Perrinville open. Although I do not have children with special needs, I do have compassion and a desire to help people, especially those who are defenseless like the young boys and girls at Perrinville. And I have a special connection with the ASD program because each of my daughters has had the privilege of being peer pals in the classrooms. And Perrinville has felt like another home for my family now for three years. Going on four, hopefully, because my youngest daughter is in the application process to participate in the GSRP program, as did her two older sisters. And my conscience cannot fathom the thought of anyone even considering the closure of such a distinct school. Plymouth Canton with the Early Childhood Academy and now Novi with the new construction of the Early Childhood Education Center are trying to emulate what Livonia already has, but it may potentially be destroyed and torn apart. I have had sleepless restless nights thinking about what may happen to Perrinville and the programs within it. People say that they were upset when their elementary schools closed, but there is no comparison. The elementary schools are a part of the standard K-12 general education buildings, but Perrinville is specially created with toddlers in mind who need additional support and services. Ms. Jarvis mentioned in the last meeting that President Obama released the request for the greater inclusion for preschools for kids with disabilities. And we have already fulfilled that mandate, if it does pass, with Perrinville and the GSRP Preschool General Education Program that is already currently in the same building. In the GSRP program, there are two full-day classes and two half-day classes with 16 students in each one. So, there would be 64 students in GSRP in the AM session and 64 in the PM session. And 99% of the students transfer to general education kindergarten. Also, there is a referral for the children from the ASD, oh, also if there is a referral for the children from the ASD and ECP programs to transition to GSRP, then the speech therapists at Perrinville are able to walk to the director's office at Perrinville and speak about the program, about the child. And if you are to close Perrinville, my burning question is, how can you keep both the ECP and ASD programs together in the fall of 2015 if the renovations for Jackson will not start until the summer of 2016? Will you move the ASD program where they are already established at Perrinville to Roosevelt for one year, then uproot and move them again to Jackson in the fall of 2016 if the renovations are complete? And what will be the purpose of spending lots of money renovating Roosevelt in order to accommodate the children in the ASD program for one year?
Mrs. Harris, you've reached your three minutes. Could you please wrap it up?
Okay.
Thank you.
From the Q and A, it says, a therapy room and a gross motor room are also being specifically designed for the ASD program. Roosevelt will have changing tables added to the restroom, defense and playground area and storage for the gross motor equipment. And I heard that the playground at Roosevelt makes you feel like a caged animal. Then waste, then waste more money to add on classrooms to Jackson in order to move them again to be together with those in ECP.
Mrs. Harris, I have to ask you to respect the three minutes.
Okay. So, I'll just read the end. Finally, someone informed me that real estate agents they know said that even though Jackson is on a smaller property than Perrinville, it has a higher value than Perrinville. So, my suggestion, suggestion for an alternate solution for a better financial decision for the district is to just keep Perrinville open and all of its programs intact as a well-oiled machine and move all of the programs from Jackson to the elementary schools and close down and raise it.
My next blue slip is from Bridget Wasserman.
Hello, I didn't have anything prepared, so I'm going to just sort of do this on the fly. I'm a speech language pathologist that I, and I work at Jackson Center and the Young Fives program and I run, co-teach the Talk It Up program at Perrinville. I guess, just in preparing to come to this meeting tonight, I've been looking online for some communication. When we had the meeting with you people at Perrinville with staff and parents, we kind of, you know, shared, let our hearts out and shared all our concerns. And we were insured, I was in Mrs. Jarvis's group, we were insured that everything we said was going to be documented and put on your website so that the public could know all of our concerns. And the only thing that I ever saw that came to us in a letter to send home to parents were specific questions and your specific answers. I don't see anywhere where everyone in the public had access to all that we shared. The communication we said about how the programs worked together, and I really feel that was poor communication, and that's part of my concern with this. There's been poor communication from the start. We were called to a meeting at the end of April. We were told this was a done deal. We go to this meeting, Mrs. Jarvis said, we haven't even voted on it yet. We're going to vote the day after Memorial Day. Okay, that, I'm glad the vote didn't take place that day, but I talked to a colleague today and I said I was going to the board meeting tonight because they're going to vote tonight. She said, oh, I thought that was already decided. And I was in a meeting today and people were in, looking for where they can put an air conditioner and where they can move this at Jackson Center. And I'm sorry, the vote hasn't been taken yet and people in the district are acting as it has been taken. So, I just wish if, you know, if you do something like this, you really are careful about your communication because this has been very poor.
Okay. Thank you. The next blue slip that I have is from Lloyd Romek.
Good evening. I was also going to talk about Perrinville. I watched the debate, attended one of the meetings. And what I saw was ridiculous. You heard all of the information, what you've just heard now and then some. And ignored it all. You didn't want to consider it. You wanted to simply endure it and let it wash over you. This was illustrated pretty well when Ms. McDonald said, surely we can find something else to cut. And the response and the vitriol was amazing. Ms. Bonnefield hammering the table on and on and then going on, well, what did you expect us to get rid of instead? Cheerleading? You exist to educate these kids, not teach them to wave bonbons. And Ms. Burton, when she had her turn at it, actually told Ms. McDonald, if you can't be on board with these, get off the board or fire, or hire a financial manager. Then you talked about having the two groups moved over into Jackson. But it said, we can't do this with Perrinville because, quote, "it's not centrally located Perrinville is on the same road as Jackson, 1.8 miles away. Is anyone sitting in this room believe that 1.8 miles is a reason to abandon a well-kept building with specialty equipment already in place in favor of one that requires significant renovation, significant spending? Now, the district's communication on this has been terrible because they don't want the parents and the general population to see what went on in these meetings. That's why I brought my camera and recorded one of them. Anyone interested can simply Google Livonia neighbors, all one word, and you'll find it easily enough. Just don't expect to be happy with the results.
The next blue slip that I have is from Jody White.
I'm not here for Perrinville, but I hope you guys get what you want. I'm here because I was given a letter from Dana Winery, the Director of Human Resources, that certified me paraphrasing that I have disruptive nature of my conduct that I'm not permitted to be a parent. And now Colleen Burton sent me another email stating that I have to go to him to talk to him. And I don't want that. I'd like to go to Gary King. My actions of being called disruptive was telling the administration that Abigail Coulter and her brother Matthew Coulter and how they were able to, and I'm quoting from the Student Handbook, how they violated building rules by participating in a conduct which was making a vulgar and obscene communication to our underage son on his phone while he was in my private home with an underage guest. My son did block the cell phone and the social media platform, but Abigail Coulter started her aggressive behavior, which is R, which was making false statements to her friend's brother, her mother and her income-seeking attorney. We've asked repeatedly for Lyndon Lewis to provide us with the documentation of how he addressed our complaints, but instead Principal Keith McDonald not requiring his assistant principal to provide the administration paperwork, used the head of security, John Raymond, to help keep our concerns about the Coulter family twisted by helping this family with a civil complaint against our family. They placed a PPO on our son. The Wayne County Court did order Abigail and her mom and their attorney to provide the proof to their false and disparaging allegations, but the parties collectively decided to ignore the court order to provide their witnesses and evidence and dismiss the due process for our son, who was fully prepared to defend himself from these hurtful lies. We did pray for this young student's disruptive nature of needing attention by the opposite sex, but we are still questioning the school district with D, when Matthew Coulter and his friends were able to assault another person. It is clearly written that it's inappropriate to attempt to cause physical injury to a student that was purposeful and intentional while he was waiting in our son's classroom and in a seat and ended his journey with Matthew inappropriately by hitting our kid in the head. I know I'm running out of time. I was a new monitor at the school. I love the school. The school is amazing. I like rules. I like regulations, pretty much what everybody else is stating. We have them. No one seems to be reading them. It appears that things are already rewritten and you guys are already planning. I researched every one of you guys. You're amazing people for this community. One's a lawyer, a couple of people love the Boy Scout. On my honor, my son is innocent. None of you have called my son, not one of you, to ask if he is innocent, not one of you. But you believe John Raymond and you believe Dana Winery. We will not accept your response that we're going to go to Dana. I'd like to go to the Gary King because I've been requesting to talk to him for a long time. It's not about the law and lawsuits. It's about doing the right thing. I need rules about disruptive behavior about these young ladies that can ruin young boys' lives with their false allegations. So, I'll wait to hear from you again, Mrs. Burton. Thank you.
Our next blue slip is from John Grisbeck.
Thank you, President Burton, members of the board. Dr. Leip, I'm not here tonight to take a position on Perrinville. I'm staying neutral on the subject. However, I do want to share this. I've been involved for nearly 15 years after being a former Livonia Public School student. I've gone through transitions. I've seen parents both positive and negative on the decisions you've made and prior boards made. Best way to be involved is to be positive. Again, positive action matters. And no matter if you like, I know, you're going to make some decisions tonight and I have no idea what you're going to decide on the Perrinville issue or some other issues that are controversial. But I'm hoping the parents stay involved because you know what? I was involved in a transition at McKinley, you know, well, about nine years ago. That's not as delicate as the decision that is going to be made tonight. I know there's special education parents here today. And that's a very, again, delicate situation. I hope you'll stay involved no matter what, even if you're disappointed in the decision that is made. Because it's not about just dollars and cents. And I know you have to budget, balance the budget because of what the state legislature put in front of you. But it's also about curriculum. And you know what? I look forward to the curriculum opportunities that lie ahead. No matter what, you decide on Perrinville or whatever other difficult decisions you have to make. I also want to say, as a follow-up from the last meeting, I want to thank the four of you that are MASP certified and the two of you that are working towards that. The other decisions you have to make this evening in regards to the, how the board operates is very diff, is, this shouldn't be a difficult decision at all. It should be something that you should move forward with. And I hope, because I know you're going to have some difficult decisions, not only with budget, but with leadership in the future, and we know that. Lastly, if I may, we know what the SPRI offers to our PTAs and our PTSAs and our, in our schools as a whole, the Ed McNamara Pancake Breakfast and scholarships that, the SPRI works, Livonia Anniversary Committee is the same thing as the SPRI, works in conjunction with the SPRI in, for the scholarships that will be presented to some of Livonia Public School students as well as Clarenceville students, June 28th at Eddie Edgar at 8:30. So, I hope you'll join us. And that's something that I'm, I sit on this youth commission as well as the SPRI committee, and I hope you'll join us with that. The mayor's, it's his last year in office, and I hope you'll again join us. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board.
Thank you. That is the last blue slip that I have for audience communications. Audience communications is a time for the board to listen to comments from the community. It is not a time that we engage in a question and answer session, but it is time for us to hear concerns that are in the community. The next item on our agenda is item 3F, response to prior audience communications. We did have a few at our last meeting. There was a family from Churchill who requested intervention on an issue with their son. We have outlined the, we have rather asked the district administration to follow up with the answers on their questions as it is the responsibility of the administration to handle the day-to-day issues of the district. We did have some questions regarding the potential Perrinville program closure. Reiterating that it is a building closure, not a program closure. We were looking, we were also asked to look into keeping the ASD and the ECP programs located in the same location, which is something that the board has continued to look at and will take up again this evening. We also had, oh, we also had a question regarding the closure of Jackson versus the closure of Perrinville and the cost differential there. It's the administration's recommendation that the operating costs of the facilities are about the same. There was also asked to be the, I'm sorry, we're also asked where the ASD students would go next year and the answer, if they're ultimately going to go to Jackson, the answer to that is that they would be attending Roosevelt next year until additional rooms for Jackson are completed. That was the, that is the knowledge that I have at this time in relation to different questions that were asked at our previous meeting. The next item on our agenda tonight is item four, and that is consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of May 18th, 2015. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of May 18th, 2015. 5C, minutes of the closed session of May 18th, 2015. 5D, minutes of the closed, I'm sorry, the special meeting of May 26th, 2015. 5E, minutes of the closed session of May 26th, 2015. 7A, bills for payment, June 9th, 2015. And 7B, approval of resolution to participate in MHSAA. And 7B, approval of resolution to participate in MHSAA.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments by board members on the Consent Agenda items? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6, Instruction Matters. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, board members, if you could pass down your closed session minutes, please? Alrighty. Item 7, is Instruction Matters, sorry, one more here. Item 7A is Approval to Purchase AP Government Textbooks. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District purchase the textbook, American Government Roots and Reform 2016, from Pearson Education, Inc., for the high school AP government course at a total cost of $46,845.23.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura, and we will hear from Mrs. Alice on this item.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton, President Burton, and good evening, everyone. I am pleased to bring to the Board of Education a recommendation to purchase new AP government textbooks for uses, for use in all of our high schools. I thought this evening I would share with the Board of Education some of the highlights that I shared with the board during the committee of the whole meeting on May 26th, when we had a more of an in-depth discussion of this recommendation. As is our practice in the school district when adopting a new textbook, a committee was formed. The committee had teacher representation from each of the three high schools that will be using the new textbook, and the committee was chaired by one of our curriculum facilitators, Dr. Joan Livingston. The committee engaged in the textbook adoption process that's outlined in our Board of Education Administrative Regulations. This process includes three major components. It includes the analysis of sample textbooks. It includes gathering input from students on the textbooks, and finally, it includes a review of the ancillary teacher support materials. As a result of completing all three of these major components and evaluating nine, nine different textbooks, the AP Government Textbook Adoption Committee is recommending American Government Roots and Reform, published by Pearson Education with a 2016 copyright. The total purchase, as previously mentioned, is $46,845.23. The funds for this purchase will come from the 2015-16 textbook budget, and as I mentioned during the committee of the whole meeting, this new textbook is needed for our AP government class in order for our teachers and students to learn the new AP government curriculum that was established by the College Board so that our students can continue to receive AP credit for this course. The AP Government book has been reviewed by our principals, and they do support its adoption.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mrs. Alice, just to be clear, if we do not order these textbooks, we will not be able to provide this opportunity to our children. Is that correct?
It is correct that the College Board requires that schools provide, the AP, provide material to teach the new AP government curriculum, and since the College Board has recently revised their AP government curriculum, and now textbook companies have had an opportunity to catch up to that curriculum revision and have revised their AP government textbooks, we are responsible for providing textbooks that teach that new curriculum or resources that teach that new curriculum in order for our students to continue to get AP credit for those courses. So that's the long answer. The short answer is yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura, and Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
I'm sorry.
Item 7, or 6A, rather.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6B, Expulsion of One Secondary Student. May I have a motion, please?
Move, President Burton.
Yes, Mrs. McDonald.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District expel one Franklin High School student, grade nine, for serious violations of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education policies.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on our agenda is Item 7C, Approval of Bid Results for Copy Paper. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Yes, Mrs. Laura.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District purchase white and colored copy paper from Contact Paper Group Incorporated, Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $112,214.75.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers, and we will hear from Ms. Abby.
Thank you very much. Good evening. This evening, we are recommending our annual purchase of paper supplies that will be used in our copier machines and at our schools. We have gone with the lowest paper bid we could find, which is with the Wayne County RISA, and we are recommending this purchase for $112,214. As we do every year, we go out and try and find the best cost for both white paper, color paper, and then the larger 11 by 17 white paper as well. We did provide with you at our last committee meeting some detail regarding changes from last year. We are actually saving a little bit of money on the eight-and-a-half by 11 white paper, which is our largest purchase. So overall, we're pleased with that. This paper comes into our warehouse and then is ordered by our schools and used throughout the school year based on, and within our budget for next year. So with that, we would recommend this purchase.
Alrighty. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? No. Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Item 7D, Approval to Relocate McKinley Programs. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District direct the district's administration to relocate current programs at the McKinley Building to other facilities within the school district, beginning with the 2015-2016 school year.
Support.
Support.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this item?
Yes, in fact, I'll address both D and E right now as far as the background information that we'll provide, and you'll be taking both of those as separate items as it relates to the motion and the vote. So as you know, we've been working for quite some time on a variety of budget issues as we're planning for the next school year, and walking through some of the things that you've already been talking about for the last several months includes creating an agreement to get a one-time amount of money for the long-term use of one of our cell towers for the, you've approved us to go ahead and look at selling a couple of pieces of our vacant property, and we're in the process of securing those bids. You approved the opportunity for us to offer an early retirement incentive in our school district, which actually was offered and was successful, and we're able to count on that for our planning for next year. You also allowed us to go through a process of allowing limited schools of choice at our early L grades, and we are accepting up to 100 students next year to generate some additional revenue in our school district. And so if we're successful in all those items, some of them we are completed with and others are still in process, but if we're successful with all those items, that will generate about $4 million in cost-saving revenue enhancement to help our budget out for next year. As you know, some of those items are only one-year items, but they will help us out with our budget for next year. As you also know, that $4 million still leaves us well over a million short of what we need to do as it relates to our target for making, having a balanced budget for next year. And so we're looking at a variety of other items. As you know, we've been talking for some time about the, for some time about the cost-saving item of facility use, and we have brought forward to the Board of Education the concept of both the McKinley and the Perrinville facilities, keeping the programs in place but relocating them within our school district. We've shared with you that we would estimate savings in our general fund by doing this of approximately $331,000. This also doesn't include the costs that we incur to take care of our buildings on a regular basis that happens when you have facilities, and it's one of the, certainly the costs of having facilities is things such as snow plowing, the maintenance guys coming over if something breaks in the building, roof leaks, et cetera, et cetera. All those things are things that we have to consider for, in the long term, as we look at trying to provide services in all of our schools, and certainly having a couple of less facilities in the school district allows us to be more successful in taking care of the buildings that we have, because as you know, we've cut a lot of our support staff over the last several years also. So again, we still, about a million dollars or over a million dollars still to go to meet our budget targets. As you know, as we've gone through this process, we've received a lot of feedback in regards to specifically the possibility of closing Perrinville. I think it's a testament to the great work that's going on at Perrinville, and I know that we certainly recognize that, that's why it's such a difficult decision for us and so emotional for the people that are at the school, because it's a great program. There are great things going on at Perrinville every single day. Having said that, we certainly do believe that the quality of programs for preschoolers with our, that are served in that school will continue, and the staff that are serving those kids will continue to be with us, and there'll even be new opportunities when we look at the opportunities that we'll be able to provide with our general preschool programs and some of our other facilities. As we relate to our long-term plans, in order to protect the programs, which has really been our goal when we started this whole process of trying to figure out how we were going to balance our budget way back in December and January, at the end of the day, there are a variety of things that we're going to have to implement to meet that target, and this is an important part of that long-term plan as we're looking at doing things that are not program-related in our school district. As you know, based on the feedback, the board did ask us to look at the possibility of adding rooms onto Jackson, so the ESP and the ASD programs could be housed together. And so what you'll notice on the second motion that you have, the Perrinville motion, is language that will direct the administration to look into and get the information back to the Board of Education on that particular concept, and so that is part of your resolution tonight. And certainly, just to finish up, obviously, this is a very difficult recommendation to bring forward to the board, and we know it's a tough decision for all of you. I do want to commend each of you who have spent a lot of time looking at what the different options are, what we can do to try to address the concerns that we've heard, and looking at the overall big picture, how are we going to continue to provide programs and services for our kids across the entire school district? So it's been a very, very challenging process for us, but I do commend you for all the work and research that you've done, leading us up to having a recommendation for you tonight. And so again, we'll take the first motion that you have in front of you, and if the board wants to make any comments relating to McKinley motion, feel free to do that, and then take a roll call vote on that, and then we'll move on to the second resolution or motion.
Alrighty. Are there any questions or comments by board members regarding this first motion, which is regarding relocating the McKinley programs? Mr. Centers?
Yeah, just for those people who have not maybe been following us closely with the McKinley programs, a lot of those are Franklin High School students that we feel like we can house inside the Franklin High School program now. So there's, we are not displacing students, and it's, it's actually got some good possible safety concerns, allows us to do some savings as far as the bond goes. So if you're watching, and it is not currently operating as an elementary school as it once was, if you haven't followed lately, but is again something that's mostly being utilized by Franklin.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Mrs. McDonald?
This is for Dr. Leepa. Dr. Leepa, what is the status of our current tenants in that, in the preschool tenants? Are we retaining?
Yes, one we have placed at another elementary school, and the other one, we have not been able to place yet, so we're still working on them.
Okay. Other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please, will you take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Item 7E, Approval to Relocate Perrinville Programs. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District direct the district's administration to relocate current programs at the Perrinville Early Childhood Center to other facilities within the school district, beginning with the 2015-2016 school year. Further, the Board of Education directs the administration to obtain designs and cost estimates for additional rooms to be erected at Jackson Early Childhood Center to house the preschool ASD program for the purpose of housing ASD and ECP programs in the same facility, and have the designs and cost estimates brought back to the board for consideration.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. There are a lot of questions and comments and so forth that the board would like to make. In order to make sure that we have ample time for every board member to be heard, I'm going to ask that we go down the line, and each board member can share their thoughts, comments, concerns, what have you. After every board member has had an opportunity to speak, we'll definitely open the floor again so that board members can, can have further comments if they wish to do so. I'm just trying to conduct this in an orderly manner because I know that there is quite a bit of conversation that I'm sure a lot of folks would like to have. We will start at the end with Mrs. Jarvis. Do you have any comments regarding this item before us?
Naturally. This is an emotional item, and it's emotional for us, too. We're not heartless, but we are required to step outside from emotion and try to be objective. It's really tough to do that. But when you do that and you look at this objectively, this is what it looks like. These programs cost our general fund an incredible amount of money. They exceed their own funding by a wide margin. This is because they have extra features. We have parapros. We have therapists. You guys know what's involved in this. The funding allocated for these programs does not come close to matching the cost of running them. Relocating these programs throughout the district allows other buildings to absorb the costs of running these programs and lets us keep the programs here. We are not required to host the ISD county-level programs. We could tell Wayne RISA, no, we can't afford to run these programs anymore, and they could take it to Taylor or Van Buren or Dearborn Heights, but these programs mean a lot to us, too. And although closing them and sending them elsewhere would go a very long way towards helping us zero-balance our budget the way we need to, we don't think that's best for Livonia. We want to keep those programs here in our city where they belong. The only way to do that objectively... We want to keep those programs here in our city where they belong. The only way to do that objectively is to let the rest of the schools help us to keep them and absorb those costs. As an FYI, I know about the building that they're building in Novi. And it might be worth recognizing that in Novi, they get $309 more per child than we get. And they can afford to put up a nice, beautiful building. I wish we could. That would be wonderful, but $309 is a lot of money and we don't have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. McDonald, are there comments or questions or?
I do. Actually, I'd like to propose a motion to postpone the Perrinville vote indefinitely until LPS audit for the 2014-15. Our president.
Excuse me. I will ask that the audience remain quiet so that the Board members can hear. I couldn't even hear Mrs. McDonald's comments there. So if you could, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to listen, but it does need to be at a level that we can hear what's going on at the Board table. Thank you very much. Mrs. McDonald, I apologize, but will you repeat what your thoughts?
Sure, absolutely. I lost them. I would, I am offering a motion to postpone the Perrinville vote indefinitely until the LPS audit for the 2014-15 school year are presented to the Board of Education. And here are the reasons for postponement. First, Perrinville building professionals, including former LPS Administrator of Student Services Kathy Donagrande stated that-
Excuse me, Mrs. McDonald. In order to go into discussion about that motion, I would need to have a second on that motion. Is there anyone on the Board table who would like to support the motion of postponing the, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mrs. McDonald, postponing the vote on this Perrinville decision indefinitely until?
The audit of the 2014-15 audit is presented to the Board of Education.
All right. Is there any other Board member who wants to postpone the vote on Perrinville indefinitely until the audit is completed for the 2014-15 school year? Seeing no second on that motion, we go back to the motion that is presented before us. Mrs. McDonald, you're-
I would absolutely love to create some comments here. As we know, we've been contacted as a board by very, and even this evening, by Perrinville professionals, including the former LPS Administrator of Student Services Kathy Donagrande, stating that keeping the program together in one building was best for the students. You know, I'm not going to get into a motion on this because you were right. Facts tell the story. And second concern is the possible departure of Dr. Leopold affected July 1st, and I feel this has a huge material impact on the decision for future management of this program and its transition. He knows this thing back and in and out, and what are we going to do as a board without having feedback from him on this? And thirdly, assets, we still don't have a budget for next year. We're making a decision based on $200,000 out of a $143 million budget. And we currently have assets in the Health and Welfare Fund that exceed $3 million. $218,000 to fund the program for another year could come out of those monies. And I know Dr. Leopold replied to my email this afternoon, and I think he was under the impression that I only sent the one sheet for the 2000, year-ending 2012. However, every year, from the adopted to the audit, there was a swing. We've always had a very positive outcome with that. For 2014, we had $4,415,516 available for that fund. And currently, we're looking at proposals this evening that has a fund balance of $3,985,342. $212,000 out of this budget is, is, is nothing. It's nothing. And for us to, to close the building and not wait, not to make sure that, you know, that we are, I mean, we're not doing the right thing to these, for these students. And secondly, the thing that I don't understand at all is why Perrinville and not Jackson? Because the condition of Perrinville is, it's a stronger building, it's been updated, it's been renovated. Jackson hasn't seen a lot of updates, I don't think, I have no idea when the last time Jackson got any updates. And for us to spend potentially a million and a half dollars of sinking fund monies to update Jackson Center when Perrinville has a lot more property, a lot more acreage, bus loop's already in place, the building's been upgraded, and they're going to have to dump a bunch of money into Jackson, and not that I so want to see Jackson closed either, however, it's got to make sense. And to me, this whole thing does not make sense to me at all. It's just totally not logical to me. And not having our budget for next year, I, I don't see how we can do this. I, you know, and I'm sure it's not going to be a pretty budget by any means, but to me, it just, it's backwards. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Centers, would you like to share any thoughts or comments?
Well, first, we, you're correct, I think, in that Dr. Leopold is very valuable to our district. He's been very useful in advising us through this, talking about the transitions that these kids will have to make. And also, he is our, we employ him to make these, these really, really tough decisions, factoring in the whole district. He has a number of really well-qualified lieutenants that advise him on these types of decisions. Anyone that thinks that Dr. Leopold or anyone on this Board takes any pleasure in this sort of thing is sorely mistaken. There's a lot of people that shared a lot of feedback. All of us really, truly listen to that. We listen to Dr. Leopold, his lieutenants. This is a very tough decision. That being said, we, Dr., Mrs. McDonald talked about our fund balances and how they're on the rise a lot of times. Well, that is actually not a surprise. It's because we do things like not replace people mid-year. We may do however we can, make painful decisions. So it's not magic numbers. It's sacrificed by a lot of the people that work in the district to do two jobs, three jobs, put in long, hard hours. So, you know, it's, it's not quite so easy as just, just finding some money here. That's, you know, we went through the budget. I looked through the line, line of budget. And to be honest, the, to get to our 2015-16 budget, we have to make some of these decisions before we, we have a budget. We have to do that by the end of the month. So in order to do that, you know, we have to take painful decisions like this so we can have a budget. Again, it's, this is something that I will support, but, you know, it's, it's a very tough decision for me. I, I am trusting the administration that they will make, they will ensure that the transitions for these kids are positive ones and that they have good experiences. And that's what, that's why we employ these people. That's why they are so well thought of is because they successfully do that time and time again.
Thank you. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Thank you, President Burton. Just in a response to Mrs. McDonald, I did receive an email from Perrinville PTA, and the suggestion was to indeed keep Perrinville open and close Jackson. Part of that would be to relocate the GSRP to the K4 schools, Mokai to Webster. And then that would open up rooms to move the Jackson Center programs in. And then as well as, rather than spending a million and a half dollars on Jackson, spend that on Perrinville to add rooms. And quite frankly, I, I'm a little confused by the email because I believe that the whole issue that was supposedly going on was that it was to keep the programs together, and now we're getting suggestions to break the program up. Currently, we have preschool programs which are a beacon for our families who are only beginning to learn to navigate the rough waters of being a parent of a special needs child. A beacon that draws families to our community. Special education programs from across southeastern Michigan refer parents to these programs, knowing that their own reputations are on the line. The program has been observed and studied by those curious about how it works to learn more and even replicate. I find it disappointing that the parents at Perrinville place so little value on the commitment of their staff and administration, that they would somehow treat, that these staff members would somehow treat children differently, that the teachers that spend every day with these children would somehow begin to treat these students differently simply because they are in a different location. To assume that staff and other buildings would somehow mistreat students or that children would be subjected to substandard conditions is, I, I think that's a real stretch of an assumption. The quote about Perrinville that I think really put this whole thing into perspective for me was, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Perrinville is certainly not broken. What is broken is Lansing and the school funding. Perrinville is collateral damage in the wake of state budgeting. The legislators would continue to pat themselves on the back about all the money they are providing to public education while community members look to the local school boards and ask, "How can they recklessly waste these resources so generously bestowed upon us?" Our integrity has been challenged and individuals have gone as far as to question our morality. Recently, the citizens of the state of Michigan had the opportunity to mandate additional funds be provided to the foundation allowance, the only dollars that are, we are able to spend in our children's classrooms. Proposal one also included constitutional changes which would have stopped some of the constant gutting of the school aid fund. The citizens of the great state of Michigan spoke loudly, "No." So here we are packed with a room of staff and parents. I ask you, what are you going to do tomorrow morning when you wake up? Are you going to call your neighbor, tell them how horrible the school board is? How heartless and morally bankrupt we are? That special education doesn't count? Are you going to call your real estate agent and put your home on the market? And are you going to collapse in defeat?
No.
None of that will change the fact that Lansing is once again going to be vindicated in their funding decisions. We will balance our budget, we will survive, and we will provide the very best education for all 15,000 students that we are responsible for with the resources that we allow. Lansing, in turn, will give us credit by saying, "See? They had room to make budget cuts. What are you boys complaining about?" Until the citizens of the state of Michigan come together and say, "No more," Lansing will continue to undermine the public education and underfund classrooms while espousing the billions of additional dollars that they so graciously provide upon education. I have no doubt that moving Perrinville programs will have an effect on the district. My hope is that you, as parents, take this to Lansing, pack their offices with parents and staff, fill their mailboxes with long letters about the benefits of housing a preschool program in one building and what will be lost. You have the power as a group of parents and educators that can make a difference. You need to be the catalyst to a revolution.
Thank you. Mrs. Laura, do you have comments you'd like to share?
I do. Thank you, President Burton. As everyone is saying, this is a very difficult decision. And when there are difficult decisions, there are people that are involved, as you know, and are emotionally committed to it. And that being said, we can't please everyone. Jackson people are now starting to communicate with us, and they're getting the word, "We'll close Jackson and move to Perrinville." And of course, they're just as emotional and they don't want to close Jackson or relocate. And I could go on and restate what my colleagues have said previously, but I think I want to add a more personal note to this. I have a three-year-old granddaughter. She will be attending the early childhood program in the fall. Do I want the best for her? Of course I do. I feel like you. I, I, I'm there. However, I'm also a Board member. I know my responsibilities, my first responsibility unfortunately is to balance a budget. We've got to do that. We need to have a workable, realistic budget by the end of June. I am just thankful now and feel so fortunate that my granddaughter can be in a good program that our district can still offer.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you have thoughts you'd like to share?
Yes. I'm going to try not to reiterate what other Board members have said. We are bound by state law to pass and submit a balanced budget. We have to do it by law. That causes a lot of difficulty when the state continually reduces what we have to work with. We're looking at another $375,000 slap in the face that we're going to have to budget in for next year, based on the information we're getting out of Lansing. Do we want to sit here and make this kind of a decision? Absolutely not. But we're required by law to do certain things. And as Mrs. Laura said, let me tell you on a personal note, I am the parent of a special needs child. I understand what you're going through. But I also have 15,000 students that I'm responsible for. I have to do what's best for all of them. I understand. You know, back in 2000, we had a fund balance here of about $20 million. Our fund balance now, what we call our rainy day fund, is less than $2 million. Why is, why has that gone down? Because we've had to use that to balance the budget. Because as Mrs. Bonnefield has said, the state continually pulls the rug out from underneath our feet. We don't want to sit here and make this kind of a decision. We'd love to have all the money in the world, but we have cut $28 million or more out of the budget in the last seven or eight years without ever cutting a program. That says volumes about our administration and what they're trying to do. That's what we're trying to do here, is save programs by moving them to areas that they can be adequately addressed. I don't want to make this move. But I understand what my responsibility is, not just to the Perrinville students, but to all 15,000 students. So I will be supporting this tonight.
I have the last opportunity to speak before we open it up, see if anybody else would like to add anything else to this. I read a list a couple of weeks ago at a committee meeting, but I know there are several folks here who may not have been in attendance at that meeting. This is a list in the last five years, not going back 10 years. This is in the last five years, what Livonia Public Schools has cut in order to be able to keep the programs for our students. And I'd like to stop for a moment and say what programs are, because it's rather a generic term that we kind of throw around a lot. Programs are learning specialists in front of our kids. Programs are elective courses for our students. Programs are remedial education for some of our students. Programs are making sure that our students in general education classes have the physical resources, the lab equipment, et cetera, that they need. These are all the types of things that go under the generic word of programs, that when we hear that word so often, it starts, at least, to me, I know, it can start to lose its meaning until we think about what is a program? It's every service that we offer to our Livonia Public Schools kids. In order to continue to offer the services that all 15,000 of our students need, this is a, this is a partial list of what's been cut already out of Livonia Public Schools. We have cut over $5 million in classroom teachers, above and beyond those that were necessitated for declining enrollment. We've cut student support staff, including counselors, learning specialists, student assistant staff, and reading recovery. We've taught, we have cut teacher aides. We've cut all kindergarten paraprofessionals. We have cut supplies, teaching materials, equipment, and textbooks. We have cut professional development. We have cut professional development that has helped make sure that our teachers stay up to date with the best practices and abilities to teach others and learn from one another to do it better. We have cut administrative and secretarial support. In the central office building alone, it used to be operated by 16 administrators. It is now operated by eight. We've cut maintenance, custodial, data, and printing. We have reduced transportation services. We've reduced athletic programs, and we have instituted pay-to-participate fees on students. And we have another, over $1 million of miscellaneous cost-saving and revenue enhancement suggestions that we have implemented. All of this has been $17 million in cuts in the last five years out of our budget in order to keep programs for our students, in order to keep the teachers in front of our students. Our staff is 90% of our budget, because we don't produce a product, we produce education. We are people teaching people. So that's where the majority of our budget comes from. And we want to keep those staff members in front of our students, because that's where the value comes in. Like a lot of folks, I have a personal experience with some of what's going on here, because my child's school was also one of the very first to be closed. And I've hearing people say it's not the same. Excuse me. Every child is valuable. Every child is valuable to their family and to their parents. I understand how painful this kind of, the decision is. Like my fellow board members, I do not want to be in this position. But unless funding changes next year, we're going to be in this position again. We've been in this position for the last 10 years. It's going to happen again unless education funding changes in the state of Michigan, because it's not getting any better. We've talked a lot about budget tonight. We do have a preliminary budget. We have to have it finalized by the end of June, but we have preliminary numbers. We have to have preliminary numbers, because we can't start on June 29th and begin to work our budget. There was talk of Health and Welfare Fund. There is money in that Health and Welfare Fund, however, it is designated for healthcare coverage for our employees, which we are contractually obligated to provide. Our employees should not and will not give up having healthcare. And they should not have to give up getting healthcare. But that healthcare, as we all know sitting in this room, is extremely expensive. Those dollars are in that fund for that purpose. What I'm, I am supporting this measure tonight, because I'm trying very, very hard to keep the programs in place for our students. Every student that we have from preschool on up is going to need other services next year. The students that are in Perrinville this year are going to be in first and second grade in a few years. This board is responsible for making sure that we have the supports in place right now for what your kids are going to need in two to three more years. We're responsible to have in place right now, five years down the road, for what your students are going to need in five to 10 years. We're also responsible, as it's been said, for making sure that the other 15,000 students have what they need at the same time. And we don't have the money that we have had. It gets cut every single year, and yet we still have the charge that we have to provide services, and we want to provide services, for all 15,000 students for every year. I do not want to be making this decision. And I know that there's benefit of all five programs staying together. When we went out and heard the community, the number-one request, loud and clear, came through, that there was a request that we find a way, any way possible, that's a quote from folks, to keep the ASD and the ECP programs together. I want you to know that this board and this administration seriously listened to that, because it was not part of the initial plan. Because of what the Perrinville parents and staff have communicated to us about the extreme value of keeping those two programs together, that is why we have the motion before us that includes, that did not include, did not have this conversation initially, but includes saving some, or spending some substantial sinking fund dollars in order to make sure we have a facility that can house both of those programs and keep those kids together. Everybody said they want to keep Perrinville open, number one. And I believe everybody in this room would like to keep Perrinville open, number one. I don't think anybody here is here because they want to be here. But the number-one request is, if it's got to close for budgetary reasons, keep those two programs together. It is paramount. And I want you to know, we listened. And that is what we're trying to do tonight, is to keep those two programs together, even if the building itself must close. What I'd like to reiterate is, I'm supporting this measure tonight, because it's going to move a program, as opposed to cut and remove a program. I know there are benefits if we could keep all five programs together, I recognize that. But I don't see how we can financially do it. Does anybody else have any questions or comments they would like to add, other than what's already been stated? Dr. Leip, is there any clarification you need to provide?
No.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
No.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7F, Approval of Change Order for Architect Services for the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education approve the change order recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, for the Bond Project Architect, Stantec Architecture, Inc., for a total increase of $203,671 and an adjusted contract amount of $4,103,253.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield that is supported by Mr. Centers. And we will hear from Ms. Abbey on this.
Thank you very much. We are recommending a change to the contract with Stantec. Stantec is the architect, Bond architect, responsible for our 5, 6, and secondary school renovations throughout the Bond Project. We did bring this to the Board of Education at our committee meeting and had some long discussion with the details. We had Paul Terrio from Plant Moran Cressa, our owner's rep here as well, to provide some of that detail. From a big picture, what we're looking at is an increase in scope of service. So what we originally asked Stantec to do when we made our original contract with them, we've increased what we're asking them to do overall on the Bond Project. You do have that detail in your packet this evening. There are seven items that we've asked them to increase their scope of work. Three are at Franklin. You'll recall that we've added some additional work in terms of the site work in the front of the building, some of the auditorium work, as well as some additional mechanical work at that site. We also have asked them to do some additional work at both Emerson, Riley, Cooper, and Frost as it relates to interior signage, exterior entryways, as well as some IT work as well. So all of those items together, you have the detail in your packet with each school and what the amount is. That's the $203,671. And within our accounting procedures and policies for the Board of Education, that does require that we bring that to the Board of Education for your information and for your approval. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Nope. All right. Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is Item 7G, Approval of Bid Results for Franklin High School Siding for the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the selection of custom architectural sheet metal specialists for the Franklin High School Metal Panel Sliding Construction Project for the amount of $159,000, for a revised total amount of $20,611,073, and authorize the superintendent or his designee to execute final contracts on behalf of Livonia Public Schools School District's Board of Education with custom architectural sheet metal.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. And we will hear from Ms. Abbey on this item.
Thank you again. Again, this item is for the Franklin renovation project that is beginning this summer. And specifically, this item, you'll recall, is for part of the siding that's going to go on the outside of the new auditorium. And when we brought the large group of bill bids to the Board of Education to approve, and that's that large number that's in your packet tonight, that amount did not include the siding. You'll recall that we had another company provide an alternate bid, that they thought that they could do the siding just a little bit cheaper than what we had, than the second bid, which is what we actually had spec'd. And we asked them to bring a sample, so we could take a look at it. We did go through that process. We met with the architects, the construction managers, and some, Mr. Archibald, myself, and the building principal, and some staff from the building. And there really was consensus that we needed to go with the originally spec'd siding, that it was a better quality product and would last longer, and provide the imprint that we had anticipated from that building. So while most of the bids for Franklin High School renovation have already been approved by the Board of Education, this is one that we wanted to step back and take a look at. So we are bringing the recommendation this evening for the original spec'd siding, and that will be $159,000 to custom architectural sheet metal specialists, and bring the total amount of the contract for Franklin up to $20.6 million. And you have that budget detail attached in your packet. And again, this was presented at our committee meeting. And Mr. Terrio from Plant Moran Cressa went through that with the Board of Education. It does make sense. We think it's going to look fantastic, and we're going to be pleased with the results. So we're very excited to bring this forward tonight.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7H, Approval to Purchase Samsung Chromebooks from the 2013 bond. May I have a motion?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase 108 Samsung Chromebooks from Troxel Communications Farmington Hills, Michigan, for a total cost of $39,560.28.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. And Mrs. Alice and Ms. Abbey, both of you are up on this.
Thank you very much, President Burton. This item will allow us to expand our existing mobile device pilot that we have and currently occurring in our schools. As we discussed with the board during the Committee of the Whole meeting on May 26th, we are currently piloting mobile devices at our K-4 schools, as well as our middle schools. Currently, at the middle school level, we are piloting Chromebooks. And at the K-4 level, we are piloting Chromebooks, iPads, and Android tablets. What we would like to do is expand our mobile device pilot to include additional devices at the middle school, and to expand the pilot to involve one upper elementary school and one high school. And we're recommending that they pilot all three of the devices. So tonight, we're going to begin with the first recommendation, which is to purchase 108 Samsung Chromebook 2s. This is the same Chromebook that we are currently using at the elementary school pilot, as well as the middle school pilot. And it will also include three storage charging carts. Each cart will house 36 of the notebooks. The upper elementary school chosen for the pilot will receive one cart, and the high school will receive two carts. We're also recommending the installation of the 108 Chromebooks. The vendor will install and configure the mobile devices. This will allow us to simulate the process that we're going to use when we deploy to a full-scale implementation, which will be for the 2016-17 school year. That way, if we run into any problems on a smaller scale, we can rectify those problems before we move to full implementation in about a year from now. The total for the Chromebook, storage, charging carts, and installation is $39,560.28. And since the vendor is Troxel, and Troxel is a REMC vendor, then no additional bids are required. The funds for this purchase will come from the technology portion of the 2013 bond. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if the board has any.
Thank you. Are there any questions by board members? Nope. Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7I, Approval to Purchase Samsung Galaxy Tablets from the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase 108 Samsung Galaxy Tablets for education from Troxel Communications Farmington Hills, Michigan, for a total cost of $34,359.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis and Ms. Abbey. I'm sorry, Ms. Abbey and Mrs. Alice, both. Which one would you like to, would like to address this?
Thank you. Thank you again. This recommendation will allow us to put the Android tablets into the three schools that we are piloting them at. That would be one upper elementary school, a middle school, and also a high school. Each school will receive one of the three storage charging carts with 36 tablets on the cart. Once again, we are recommending the installation and configuration of these 108 tablets for the same purpose that we recommended for the Chromebooks. The total for the Galaxy Tablets is slightly less than the quote that I presented to the board during the Committee of the Whole meeting on May 26th. It is $76 per item less, because we have found the, a rebate that now is available for this version of the Samsung tablet. And the vendor, again, is Troxel. Troxel is a REMC bidder, so therefore, no additional bids were required. And the funds for this purchase will come from the 2013 bond. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Mr. Johnson?
Mrs. Alice, the savings with the rebate is, what, about $9,000?
It comes to about $9,000, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments by board members? Nope. All right. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Item 7J, Approval to Purchase Apple iPads from the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase from the Apple Store, Cupertino, California, 108 Apple iPads and three carts for the cost of $51,681.85. And custom integration and setup for a cost of $1,944, for a total cost of $53,625.85.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Abbey and Mrs. Alice.
Thank you again. This third recommendation that we are bringing to you is for the purchase of iPads. This is our third mobile device type that we will be piloting in one of the upper elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school. Each of the schools will receive one of the Power Sync carts with 36 iPads on the cart. Again, we are recommending the installation and configuration of these tablets for the same purpose that we were requesting for the Chromebooks. Since Apple is a sole provider of the iPads, we do not, we are not required for additional bids. And the funds for this purchase will come from the technology funds that are part of the 2013 bond. And finally, in closing, at the conclusion of our pilot next spring, we will be surveying the teachers who are, who will be piloting these devices. And they will provide us with some feedback and input that will then provide direction and support for us as we identify the mobile devices when we move to full-scale implementation for the 2016-17 school year.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I would... Are there any questions or comments by board members? No. Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 7K, approval of bid results for document cameras for the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Crescent, to purchase document cameras from VSC Inc., Novi, Michigan, for a total cost of $408,455. And to provide a contingency budget of $40,846 for a total cost of $449,301.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And we will hear from Ms. Abby and, oh, Mrs. Allison. Agitating on these, huh?
Thank you again. And we are very pleased to bring to the board a recommendation to purchase document cameras for all of our classrooms. The document cameras are one of several technology tools that we will begin to install in our classrooms if the board approves this purchase as early as this coming summer. The Phase 1 schools will receive the document cameras, followed by Phase 2 schools, and then the remaining schools will receive the document cameras following the renovation schedule. Prior to the recommendation that is in front of you this evening, we piloted multiple types of document cameras in 15 of our elementary schools as we, I'm sorry, 15 of our schools, as we described to the Board of Education during the Committee of the Whole Meeting on May 26th. We surveyed the teachers at the end of the pilot to get their feedback, and their overwhelming response was for the Ladybug Lumen, which is why you have the recommendation in front of you this evening. We made available a request for proposal on April 27th, and the bids were opened on May 14th. Based on the evaluation of the project team, we are making the recommendation that you have in front of you this evening to award the contract to VSC Inc. and Novi for the purchase and the installation of the Lumens DC 192 Ladybug in all of our classrooms.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Centers?
Yeah, we've asked a number of questions about this in our Committee of the Whole Meeting. And these will be replacing a lot of existing document cameras. These are, that may or may not be in certain classrooms. These are HDMI, I think, right?
Yes, they are.
They are all digital. They are the newest, greatest things. So it's, it'll be a good useful tool, tool for a number of years for our teachers.
Yes, that's correct. And then the existing Ladybugs and Lumen document cameras that are in the schools will be available for use in other rooms within the school where the, that are not for classroom use, so that they could be used in other areas where we are not providing the new Lumens Ladybooks.
Are there any other questions or comments?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. I just wanted to point out that once again, Plant Moran has brought this in well under budget, by about 20%, it looks like.
Yes. The funds are well under budget for this technology tool, so we're very pleased with that.
Thank you, President Burton.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Item 7L. We don't usually get down to L. It's been a lengthy evening tonight. This is adoption of final budget amendments for the 2014-2015 school year. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached final amended budgets for the 2014-15 school year. General Fund, Special Education Fund, Debt Retirement Fund 2013 Bond Series 1, Debt Retirement Fund 2014 Refunding Bond, 2013 Bond Fund, Building and Site Technology Fund, Sinking Fund Capital Projects, 2012 Capital Projects Fund, Food Service Fund, Health and Welfare Fund, Athletic Fund, Scholarship Fund, and Funded Projects Fund.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item?
Thank you very much. We are bringing forward the 2014-15 final budget amendment as we do each year when we adopt the budget in about this time each year. Then we amend it several times during the year to bring the Board of Education the most up-to-date projections and information that we have available. This is actually our fourth amendment for this particular school year. I'm going to use a little new technology here, so bear with me. We're piloting something new. As you can see, we're not pulling down the big screen and disrupting everything, so we'll see how this works. You also have the PowerPoint at your seat if you'd like, but hopefully, this will work and you'll be able to see it there. Just taking a step back, of course, we did bring this to the Committee of the Whole at our last meeting and go over the final amended budget. You have been provided, for this final budget, the typical budget book that we bring you that brings all of the detail on all of our funds that we are revising this evening. It also provides you a lot more detail on the general fund in terms of, it shows all of the major changes made on the budget. It also provides in the back a detail by function area, so by each area, elementary education, secondary education, you can see changes in salary, you can see changes in benefits, et cetera. So that book was provided to the board several weeks ago. We also had brought a summary of those changes to the Board of Education last week, which I will go over right now. And also, because I see Allison Smith, who works in the business office in the audience tonight, I just want to say hi because I think she's attending her first board meeting. And I want to thank her for all her hard work because she does a really big chunk of what you're about to see. So thank you, Allison, for your work. So with that, we'll see how technology works. And how, and you guys can let me know. I know it's hard to see the little numbers, but even when we had them on the TV, they were hard to see. So what you're looking at, of course, is the original adopted budget, all the way through all four amendments. We're looking at the final amended budget. Our revenues actually increased by $192,000. That's on $144.4 million, so percentage-wise, very small. Big, I'll go over the changes in the revenue in just a minute. Our expenditures actually decreased by just $560,000. So overall, we saw a change in fund balance, a change to the positive, an increase in the fund balance of $757,000. That brings our fund balance projected for the 2014-15 school year at just a little over $1.7 million. That is an improvement from where we started out for the year. Couple of things that we had talked about, if you remember at the Committee of the Whole is, we made some mid-year budget adjustments to help us improve that number. We had staff that we did not replace when, through attrition this year. We also asked staff to curtail their spending. While we certainly said, you know, we didn't stop all spending for the year, but we did say, if you don't have to buy it, don't buy it. So we appreciate our staff. As Mr. Centers had said a little bit earlier, position people doing two jobs during the school year, as well as, I think, really watching the nickels and dimes that helped us get to that somewhat slightly increased fund balance. And again, still a projection, but based on what we know today, we should be, that should be a reasonable projection. We do hope it comes in better than that. We always hope it comes in better than that, than where we end up at our fund balance. So with that, oops, I forgot, I'm in charge of my own clicking. Okay. Let me go through the revenue changes. Again, a total of $192,000. There was a big swing between local and state revenue. That's just a function of the fact that our property tax actually are going to, what we're going to receive in revenues, about $700,000 less than anticipated. The state makes up that number, so that number's included in the state increase. We also saw an increase of about $100,000 in Medicaid revenue. That's reflected in the local revenue. And then some increased special aid and other state aid funding. Again, very small changes in some of the other areas for a total of $192,000 increase in revenue. On the expenditure side, we had a total decrease in revenue of $565,000. The bulk of that is in salaries and benefits. That's just us, and again, Allison, mostly. Going through every single line item and saying exactly where are all our teacher contracts when we've accounted for leaves of absence, or, you know, again, not filling some positions. And then the benefits as well, that reflects the FICAN retirement, as well as other costs with those employees. We are happy to reflect, if you look at that supply line, down about $211,000. A big chunk of that was actually diesel fuel of about $120,000. So as we all know, there's, there was a nice time where it was very low at the pumps. It's creeping back up again, but we still reflect a savings for the share of that amount. So again, multiple line items on some of those other things, whether it's teaching supplies, office supplies, et cetera. And we also reflect about $100,000 decrease in what we anticipate to have to return in tax refunds this year, property tax refunds. So all of that's reflected in the $565,000. So, and again, these are all of the other funds that you're approving this evening. There were not any significant changes in these funds that, you do have those in your, in your book that you received earlier, and also in our resolutions this evening. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Dr. Lea.
Just a couple of big-picture comments on what we just looked at. Number one, while we're pleased that the numbers are looking better than they were the last time we looked at it, we're still anticipating spending $2 million more than we have coming in. And that's a significant issue for us as we move forward. Mr. Johnson mentioned that at one time, we had a $20 million fund balance in the school district, and we did. And that number's dwindled down to almost nothing now. And that's because we've been spending more money than we have coming in. And our opportunities to continue to do that are, are pretty much running out on us. And so I want to make sure that that message is, is clear in the numbers that we've looked at and the challenges that we face looking at next year and the following year. Would also highlight through that process that we've been doing that, of course, in order to protect programs. And as Mrs. Abby mentioned, we certainly hope that those numbers do come in even better when we're done with our final audit. But at the end of the day, we're still spending more money than we have coming in, and that fund balance has been dwindling for many years. The other, other thing I would highlight is just in the Health and Welfare Fund. When you looked at those numbers, we do have a balance of, estimated balance of approximately $3 million in there. And as we've shared with you, our long-term plan with that is that we can offset any additional costs for healthcare that we have in our school district with those dollars that are left there, so it doesn't hit our general fund. And so if you look at that projection, that budget is expected to be about $1.3 million more, again, going out than coming in. And so we hope that that money can last us at least for a couple more years, so we don't have a big hit in our general fund. Because if that was not there, guess what? That would be an additional $1 million in our general fund in costs because they're not being picked up in the Health and Welfare Fund. And so, and so that's been our, the benefit of that particular fund and the way that that's been set up for years. Of course, we were self-insured many, many years ago and didn't know until well after the year how much our actual claims were. But we've always had some, a level of fund balance in there, and we're looking at utilizing that over the next few years to protect programs and our other funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from board members? Mr. Centers?
I, you know, we get to see up close how difficult it is to realize half a million, $564,978 in savings during the year, not counting all the stuff that was cut before the year even started. That's enormously difficult, and it shows how good our teachers, staff, administrators are and how, how hard they work. We really can't say that enough. Can't reiterate that enough. They could have easily gone this year and just wrote it out. They tried to save every penny they could. So seeing here, be, having to make tough decisions, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, President Burton. Ms. Abby, when, and just maybe so you can explain it to us next week when we go into our, our budget discussion for, for next school year. When we're doing the AS proposed school year or budget at the beginning of the year, how are the state numbers calculated? Because from what we have from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, there's like a, almost a $6 million swing. So can you explain to us how that transpires?
Yeah. Well, what's, the basic calculation is our foundation allowance times the anticipated number of students. So we, whatever, the enrollment assumptions that we make when we go forward. The other thing that you're looking at right now, when you look at that big revenue change, that's that 147(c) retirement money that we're getting from the state. So we don't have all those numbers today. We will make that adjustment in the, in the amendment. So you'll recall that we're, the state is providing for the, some of the unfunded retirement, the state is providing money in our state aid to compensate for that. So our expenditures go up, and our revenue go up, and it's fund balance neutral. In other words, we don't make money on this deal. So we don't necessarily know all those numbers today. We don't know all of our staffing numbers. We don't know all of the changes. So we don't account for that in this budget. And then when we come forward in the fall and we say, okay, we have a pretty good idea of where all of our staffing is and what all our costs will be, then we calculate that retirement expenditure as well as the retirement revenue. And I think we made maybe one other adjustment after the fall one, because it still can fluctuate a little bit if our staffing changes. So that big swing that you're seeing in the state relates to either 147(c) or 147(d). And you'll remember that the 147(d), the actually, once the fall started, they cut off the funds. So they were giving it to us each month, and then the state said, ah, we need that money for other purposes, and they just stopped in the middle of the fall. So that money, we just had to kind of backtrack on and, and account for it in a different way. Again, it was fund balance neutral, but those are the kind of things that happen that we just sometimes can't anticipate what the state's going to do. So again, that, what you're seeing particularly in the last couple of years is, is an adjustment for either 147(a), c, or d specifically.
And 147(a) is what?
It's also retirement money, but that was actually like a state categorical. It was actually additional money to the district for, for several years. So that wasn't offset by additional expenditures.
Okay, that was not.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 8A, resignations. There is no motion on this. This is for, this is not for a vote. This is for board information only. Next item on our agenda is 8B, retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Denise Burke, Kay Collop, Vicki Caldwell, and Joanne Jones.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And this is the man you're going to be addressing this for tonight?
I am. Thank you, and good evening. I'm bringing to you tonight the recommendations of resolution for four employees who have chosen to retire from Livonia Public Schools. These four employees have dedicated a combined total of 74.8 years of service to the students, the staff, and the school communities to which they belong. We would like to thank them for their dedicated service and wish them well as they embark on their new adventures.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And then thanks again, from a, from a board perspective, thank you so much for the service that, that these folks have, have given to the district and that so many of our staff so many of our staff and teaching staff, support staff, and administrators go to the district every day. It's very appreciated. Mrs. Bonnefield? We have a support by Mrs., I'm sorry, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 8(c), and we thank the families of those being promoted tonight for your utmost patience. It has been a lengthy meeting, and we are happy to get to some celebratory information. The next item is the 8(c), the appointment of upper elementary principals. May I have a motion, please?
It would be my pleasure, President Burton.
Go right ahead.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Sarah Ahern as an elementary principal at Cooper Elementary School, beginning with the 2015-2016 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this on this item?
Yes, absolutely. We actually have several appointments for you tonight, and we'll take them one at a time. And as you know, we've had some significant retirements in our school district over the last month. And that's always a tough time for us to see some of our outstanding, longtime administrators move on. But it's also an opportunity for us to provide an opportunity to, people who are excited about coming into the field of administration, and I'm pleased to recommend several different very, very qualified individuals that are before you tonight. And I'll start with the appointment of the elementary principal. And we have Ms. Sarah Ahern, Ahern actually is her correct pronunciation.
You've been mispronouncing it all along. I'm sorry.
Yes, she's been in our district for a few years, so we've gotten it down now. And Sarah is a remarkable educator, is currently the assistant principal at Cooper, and has been for the last three years. Comes very, very highly respected and well-regarded by both staff here at the board office, and certainly staff at Cooper. In fact, I think I would have been killed if I'd have brought a different recommendation forward to the board by the staff, for sure. And we had excellent, excellent candidates that applied for the job. Sarah has a BA from the University of Michigan, and a master's and a specialist degree from Eastern Michigan, and has been involved in many, many activities in our district, again, both at the district level and at the school level. And as you know, there are some very unique things that are going on down at Cooper Upper Elementary School. And I know that Sarah's going to do a phenomenal job making sure that those things continue in the right direction. And we're just so lucky that we found her several years ago from the Wayne Westland School District, and convinced her to come and be part of our team. So, I'm very pleased to recommend Sarah afford this position.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments by board members?
Well, we, just one. We oftentimes get invited out to buildings, and we got to see Sarah up close with Leader and me. And, you know, she was taking a prominent leadership role there, and with outstanding results. And we hear just great feedback, so this is exciting for the board. Congratulations.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, we will take a vote, and then we will have you address the group as the principal officially. But let's go ahead and take that vote, please. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, and welcome as official principal of Cooper.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Leepa, and the Livonia Public School community, for the past three years, I've had the privilege of leading alongside Terry Taylor as the assistant principal of Cooper Upper Elementary. I am beyond excited and grateful to be given this opportunity to lead Cooper as the principal, and to continue the legacy of Leader and me and our mission of leading and learning. I also want to thank all of you and the Cooper staff, students, and parents. I am so excited for this opportunity, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And continuing on with some of the more fun things on our agenda tonight, item 8(d) is the appointment of middle school principal. May I have a motion, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been a long night. President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. McDonald. Would you like to make the motion?
Oh, absolutely.
Go for it.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent. Oh, wrong one. It's been a really long one. I got it. Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Anthony Abate?
Abate.
Abate, I'm sorry.
You can say it any way you like.
All right, good. Tonight we cannot. As a middle school principal at Frost Middle School, beginning with the 2015-16 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this on this?
Yes, we're certainly pleased to share with the community the excellent qualifications of Tony as being recommended to be the new Frost Middle School principal. He currently is the assistant principal at Frost, and has been for the last four years. Again, we stole Tony away, and we're very excited to be able to do that four years ago. And in a very short period of time, he certainly has earned the respect of the staff, the parents, and a lot of people across the school district with his activities in a variety of district-wide committees. He also has an undergrad degree from the University of Michigan. He also has a master's in public administration from the University of Michigan, has served on several district committees, and has a very unique qualification that I think you will all appreciate. He is a school board member in South Lyons.
He is currently.
So, that's, I figured that was a good thing for the board when we brought this recommendation forward. And Tony's going to be a great fit. I have to tell you, in the interview, the last interview, when Dana and I were spending time with Tony, we almost had to throw water on him. He was so excited about this potential opportunity. Again, there were some excellent, excellent people that put him for this job, and I think were equally qualified, and will have opportunities in the future. But Tony just stood out as the right fit to be the next principal at Frost, and we're very pleased to bring this recommendation forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. As a past Frost parent, I am beyond excited to see Mr. Abate as the incoming principal at Frost. When he was the assistant principal, well, as a parent, you know how it feels when you get called to the assistant principal's office. It's never good news. But he had a way of making us feel at ease and confident and resolving issues with grace and aplomb, and I am, as I say, just beyond excited. Congratulations, Mr. Abate.
Are there any other questions or comments by board members? I'm sorry, I thought you were pointing. Mr. Johnson?
Well, I just want to say that it is now about 20 to 10. And if he has such-
He's still awake.
-good control of his class as a school, as he does his children, he's going to do a great job. And further, I sat with Tony on the district school improvement team, and it's been a pleasure, Tony.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, we will take a vote, and then ask you to come up to the podium. And to the Abate family, if you can't see very well, we can't see you hardly at all. So, if you are not in a position to be able to see well, please feel free to move. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
I will. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Mr. Abate. Would you like to address the public?
Thank you so much. I'll only take a moment. You've heard a lot of talk tonight.
No, this is your time. Go ahead.
These little monkeys here are usually in bed. We don't let them just run wild. But they, they-
Hi, guys.
Hey, guys. This is my, this is my oldest, this is Alexander. He's four. And this is Benjamin. He will be three in just a couple of weeks. And, yeah, here they are, sporting papa. So, thank you. Thank you so much. I am a Livonia boy. Fellas, fellas.
They're fine.
I think I have to take back that comment.
Yeah.
They're fine.
I was born here, went to school here, went to Cass Holmes and Stevenson. This is a really personal moment for me, because four years ago, you didn't just give me a job, you brought me home. And there couldn't be a better place for me to be. And I want to say to Chris Berry, this does not happen, this moment does not happen without you. You were, you have been exactly what I needed, everything I needed in a mentor. And I couldn't have had a better four years, a better teacher, if it weren't for everything you have taught me, and all the patience, and all the times you smiled when my inexperience was on glaring display. I wouldn't be here. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mom, I'm going to throw something out to you really quickly. When I was younger, like a lot of kids, I didn't think my mom was right about anything, because I, of course, knew all of it. And as I got to college, I said I was going to be pre-law, and she said, no, 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 you're not. And she said, you need to find something you love, and she directed me towards education. And I have to say, Mom, I have never been happier and more glad that you were right, and you always have been. Thank you. And this is my wife, Rose, and she's sitting with her mini, and that's my mini. And they're here to support. So, thank you. I'll stop taking every time. Thank you so much. I'm just excited to get started.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 8(e), appointment of high school principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Gary Harper as high school principal at Stevenson High School, beginning July 1, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this item?
Yes, again, very pleased to bring forward the recommendation of Mr. Gary Harper to the Board of Education. Gary's been an assistant principal in our school district since 2008, and he's actually been at two of our high schools. He started at Franklin High School, and then went to Stevenson High School, and actually was a teacher for several years at Churchill. And so, Gary's seen all of our high schools, brings a lot of experience. His background actually is in business. He has a business degree from Central Michigan University, and he started his career, not in education, but in business, and brought that forward. And I think that was a great experience from a leadership standpoint in what his future was to hold. In 2000, he got involved in education. He does have a master's degree in teaching, and a specialist in leadership from Wayne State University. And again, Gary's been involved in a lot of different activities in our school district. There were some excellent candidates that were in the mix along with Gary. It was a hard decision for us, but he just stood out as being the right fit for Stevenson High School. And I don't have to tell you how huge a job it is to be a high school principal. It is a significant, significant responsibility, and we're very excited to see Gary take over the helm at Stevenson High School.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from board members? I do want to add my two cents. Being a Stevenson parent for the last 12 or 13 years straight now, it's been my privilege as a parent to be in the building with Gary Harper as an assistant principal. Both Jim Gibbons, right now, leaves some very, very big shoes to fill, as did Steve Archibald before him. And I do believe, from everything I've seen, that Gary Harper will do a wonderful job. So, it's our privilege to be able to hire him into that position. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Since I was kind to Tony, I also say that I've sat on the district school improvement team with Gary, and it's been a real pleasure. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? No. All right, seeing none, Mrs. Laura, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please? We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald.
I will. Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
I just want to thank the board and Dr. Leepa. I was really honored to go through this process, the whole interview process, and ultimately being selected was a huge learning and lifelong experience. And so, I'd like to thank Dr. Leepa and the interview team, who was all sitting over there. We went through four of them.
Translation is really grueling.
Yes, you made it.
Yeah, I finally made it. So, and I just look forward to continuing the strong traditions of excellence in athletics, in academics, and community service that Stevenson students provide to this community every year, and delivering up to the legacy that Steve Archibald and Jim Gibbons have provided for Stevenson, the great leadership, because it is a flagship school. And I really am just so proud to have an opportunity to lead it. So, I have to introduce these people over here.
If they waited this many hours, yes.
They've been waiting this long. They won't let me in the car if I don't, that's for sure. I've got a long walk home. First, my mother, Sharon, who's always been a great supporter and cheerleader for me. Thank you. My better half, way better half, Amy. And my daughter Jenna, my daughter Elizabeth, and my son Hayden. So, they came out to support me, and I really appreciate it. So, look forward to starting this next school year and going from there. So, thank you very much.
Sounds great. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item 8(f), appointment of student services coordinator. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Elizabeth Santa as the student services coordinator, beginning with the 2015-2016 school year.
Support.
We have a motion for Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Dr. Leepa?
Yes, we're going to bring it home here with another outstanding individual. And this is a little bit of the hazing process. They have to wait through a board meeting until the end to get through this. So, that's part of-
This was a tough one.
-getting them tough and getting them ready. But we're very, very honored to bring forward Mrs. Beth Santa for the position of student services coordinator. Beth has a BS and an MA from Wayne State in Communication Disorders and Sciences. She also has her Director of Special Education certification from Grand Valley State University, and that's a rather intense process to go through and achieve. She's actually been in the school district since 1992, and her recent role as program specialist has really provided her the opportunity to have a wide range of supervisory responsibilities in a variety of our special education programs. And she's a remarkable individual. She's a remarkable supervisor. And I've had the chance, when I visited the center programs at different occasions, to see Beth at work with kids. And it reminds us the special calling that our special education service providers in our schools have taken on to serve these students. She's remarkable with kids, and it's a real pleasure to bring this recommendation forward.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments by board members? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I had the privilege of working with Beth at Webster, and I can't say enough good things about her. Beth, congratulations. I'm so thrilled to be among the first to welcome you to your new position.
Any other questions or comments? As in keeping with this portion of our meeting, we will take a vote and then invite you up to the podium. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
President Burton, Dr. Leepa, and the board in the Livonia community, I want to thank you for this wonderful opportunity to serve our district as a coordinator. I'm a little nervous, but I do want to express my gratitude. I've worked for the district for 23 years in many different roles. And I can honestly say that I've enjoyed every single one of them. I know that I have a tremendously difficult task following Dr. Jennifer Terriell, who has been a wonderful mentor and a support to me, as well as all of the administrators that I've worked with in this district as well. I'm committed to providing support to our students, families, staff, and the board, and the Livonia community to the best of my ability. And I want to thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8G, A Notice of Discontinuance of Teaching Contracts. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent that the teachers, as listed, be laid off for the school year 2015-16 and that their teaching contracts not be renewed at the end of 2014-15 school year. It is further resolved that the records show that the reasons for this action are a result of the budget process, the district's financial situation, enrollment changes, teachers returning from leave, and program changes. It further resolved that the Board of Education direct the Secretary of the Board to send a letter to each of the individuals listed, officially notifying them that their teaching contracts will not be renewed at the end of 2014-15 year and that they will be laid off as teachers in the Livonia Public Schools School District.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Ms. Demand, would you like to address this item?
Yes, thank you very much. This evening, I am bringing to the board the names of 40 teachers, which is 35 FTE, for the discontinuance of their contracts. And as Ms. Bonnefield mentioned, staffing of buildings is a function of a variety of variables that can include enrollment, student demand for scheduling, the budget process. When these functions are coupled with the need to place more senior teachers returning from leave and the bumping process, the individuals listed on the attached must be laid off since there are no positions for them at this time. However, if circumstances change due to retirements, resignations, or requested leaves of absence, it would be our hope to recall all of these employees for the 2015-2016 school year.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Bonnefield.
I did sign those letters today. And my name is going out on 40 letters to individuals who have been committed and hardworking for our district. And they will receive a letter very shortly that their means of income is being cut off. And I am so sorry that that had to happen.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Centers?
Having been on the other side of receiving these a number of years ago, but now I know exactly how people feel. Very, very tough. My hope is that circumstances change, so oftentimes they do, that we can have every one of these teachers back because I'm sure there are some very quality educators on this list. So, and we're going to work very hard to get the district in a place where we need all these people.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And Ms. Demand, just for the benefit of the public, so that they understand some of how that process works, even if a teacher is, say, a full-time teacher and is going to be going to an eight-tenths position, that officially has to be a layoff and rehire. And so, a number of the folks on this list will be in that situation.
That is correct. You have to discontinue the contract because they were a one, a full-time employee. And in order to bring them back part-time, you have to discontinue, and then they're recalled.
Okay, so a good number of the folks on this list are, will likely be laid off. And in short order, you'll begin the recall process.
Recalled, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Bonnefield, we have a motion on the table for Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 8, Teacher Recall Authorization. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and authorize the Superintendent or his designee to begin, as soon as circumstances permit, the recall procedure for teachers who are on layoff. Set authorization not to exceed the 2015-2016 staffing guidelines.
Support.
We have a motion for Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Ms. Demand, would you like to address this item?
Yes. If approved this evening, this would allow the administration to recall teachers in a very expeditious manner. Once the letters of recall have been issued to staff members, the list of teachers who accept those positions offered and are then presented to the Board for formal ratification. And we would like to do that as soon as possible.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, Reports from the Superintendent. Dr. Leepa?
Very much, President Burton. It's very hard for us to realize that we're literally finishing up our last week of school this week. And a lot going on, obviously, as we plan for next year and making difficult decisions to make sure that we're still providing as many programs and services as we can to students. But I don't want to lose the fact that it's been a great school year. And there are great things going on every day for all 15,000 students in our school district. And I would certainly want to extend my thanks to everybody involved in that, certainly our staff, our kids, our parents, our business community, who come together in so many different ways to support our kids each and every year. So, finishing up the end of a great school year and certainly highlighted by graduation a week ago. And I'm sure whoever closes up for the board tonight will comment on the great graduations that we had over last weekend and a certainly reminder of why we do the work that we do. We're feeling good where we're at in regards to finishing up our planning for the next school year. As you know, we brought a variety of recommendations to you to begin the process of hiring administrators. Of course, the dominoes now happen. And so, we have to now hire some assistant principals because of the number of internal candidates that we have. And as I've highlighted for the board, we still have a K-4 principal to hire and bring forward to you. We hope to be able to bring the K-4 principal to you at the next board meeting. And we're not sure exactly when we'll be able to bring the other ones, but that will be hopefully early in the summer as we continue to make sure that all of our administrative positions are filled. But we certainly think we're off to a great start with that. As it relates to our budget planning, as you know, it's very, very difficult with some of the decisions that we're continually faced to make. But we do believe that next week, we'll have a list of additional recommendations for you and will be prepared to move ahead with our planning for our programs for next year. As you heard, our funding for next year is only a net increase of $25 per student. That's $25 less than we had anticipated as we've been doing our budget planning, which was an additional $375,000 less than we thought. And so, the only thing I can say is, at some level, with some of the combinations of the categorical funding over the last few years, I'm hoping to some extent, we've hit bottom. And the increases in the foundational allowance will be a little bit larger in future years. Of course, it seems that I say that every year. And so, it's been a long haul for us. But we'll continue that planning and get that finished up this month. And I think we'll be in good position to do so. And just as a last item to finish on a great note, you know, a thank you to our PTSAs across our school district. We were looking, the state actually keeps track of the PTSA budgets that they, they actually have to turn their budgets into the state office. And it outlines how much money now is given back to the schools by each of the schools across the state of Michigan. And when you looked at all of our schools throughout our school district, and that would not include our booster clubs and et cetera at our high schools, just the PTSAs in our school district put over $600,000 back into our school district this year. That's amazing. And the bottom line is, you know, where would we be without our PTSAs? I don't know, because that's one heck of a significant contribution to make sure that we're doing great things for kids. So, I want to thank the PTSAs for their efforts. And with that, turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 10A, Second Reading of Board Policy BD1, Formulation of Bylaws. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for the following, Policy BD1, Formulation of Bylaws.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this item?
Yes, actually, you've reviewed the next two agenda items, A and B, on multiple occasions, both in committee. And you've had a first reading on them. And this has to do with the formulation of bylaws and policies. And really, the only thing that you're doing in these two policies is reflecting the current practice of the Board to have a first reading of any change or new bylaw or policy at a regular or special meeting. And then have a vote on that particular item at a subsequent regular or special meeting. That's been the practice, again, for a long time by the Board of Education. In fact, you did it with these particular items. You had a first reading, and then you're voting on it in a follow-up meeting. So, we're just clarifying the language in those two policies to have it reflect what our longstanding practice has been.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, we have a motion from Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 10B, Second Reading of Board Policy BD2, Formulation of Policies. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for the following, Policy BD2, Formulations of Policies.
Thank you.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Dr. Leepa, I assume you don't need to address this separately since it's the same thing?
Yes.
Same thing for, the exact same thing that we just went through for bylaws, it's for policies. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 10C, Hearing from Board Members. It has become customary for this board rather to have seven of us reiterate the same thing seven times. One board member speaks for the board. And then if anyone else has anything that they'd like to add, they're certainly welcome to do so. Tonight, we'll be hearing from Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. I'd like to be brief, but there's a lot to say tonight.
It's a busy night.
It is a busy night. First of all, congratulations to Max Parr. What an amazing young man, really, to have back-to-back state winner on that. You be the chemist. It's just phenomenal. I was throwing my chemistry set away at his age. Obviously, good luck to him at the national competition in Philadelphia. We're all pulling for you, Max. Congratulations to Mark Hague. What a phenomenal job he does for our school district. It's just unbelievable. The Alan W. Bush Award, I mean, he just is a phenomenal individual. I've had the opportunity to spend some time with him. And he just amazes me in all he does over there for the kids. And for the school district. It's unbelievable. We thank you for always putting students first. That's what he's all about. Congratulations to Dr. Paul Sari for 40 years of education in our school system. I was at the MCS night. And when you look at the students that come through that program that he's part of, it just about, it blows your mind. It really does when you look at where these students are going for education. And to listen, there were a couple of students that in all of their AP courses, from the very first course they took, they never got anything less than an A minus. And that's in the AP courses. It was just staggering. There was something in the neighborhood of close to $2.5 million in academic scholarships. One of the young men had a full ride to Michigan State in academics. And Paul Sari is part of that process. So, thank you, Paul, for everything you do for the students of our district. If we can squeeze a couple more years out of you, that would be great. Congratulations to all our new administrators. Sarah Ahern, for her appointment as Principal Cooper. We're looking for good things from her. Anthony Abate, what a young man. He did such a great job controlling his kids right up until the end. But good luck to Tony, to Gary, Gary Harper. You know, as I said, we've worked with him. Colleen has worked with him. Liz has worked with him on district school improvement, as has Dan and Tammy. He's a unique individual. He's going to do a great job at Stevenson. Congratulations to Elizabeth Santa for her appointment as Student Services Coordinator. Boy, she's going to get some big shoes to fill. And I think she's going to do a great job. Thank you to all our retiring teachers. Denise Burke, Kay Collop, Vicki Caldwell, and Joanne Jones. I mean, that was an average of about 22 and 1/2, 23 years of experience between those individuals. Thank you for your service to our community. We did, as a board, I think we were all at all of the graduations, if I remember correctly. I'm not sure if that's a first. I think it is since I've been on the board.
First in quite a while.
What great students we had.